Yeah. I mean, this is a smart way to do it. Good job undercover, I guess. Well, obviously. But let's be honest, like catching them was probably a lot. Probably a little more satisfaction there. Oh, yeah, I just, I thought that was really neat.
Sure.
Over the life that's that long and if he, as you said, was so involved, I'm sure.
Okay.
It'd be difficult for this.
You guys want to start?
Really? My gosh, I love that.
Can we start? It is six twenty-nine and some seconds and I'm gonna call the September ninth, 2024 meeting of the Meridian Township Planning Commission to order. Start with a roll call. Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Blumer.
Yes.
Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Present.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
And Chair Commissioner Shrewsbury is here.
One more.
What? Oh.
I don't have a name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I'm real.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ramback. You're not on my list because I grabbed an old list, I'm sorry. Glad you're here. Thank you. So we are all here. That's great. Next is public remarks. This is an opportunity for members of the public who are here would like to speak on things that do not have public hearings scheduled, to speak on anything on the agenda or anything you'd like to. Is there anybody who would like to speak now? Is there any public comment? Thank you. Now we'll go to approval of the agenda and I would like to just suggest an addition, the communication that we have from Director Schmidt. I'd like to put an item under unfinished business to approve an updated calendar for future planning commission meetings. So with that minor amendment, if there's nothing else, I undertake, oh, I should have asked for a motion to approve the calendar. I approve the agenda before we go. Okay? Make it approved. It is Monday. So I believe that was moved by Commissioner Scales and seconded by Commissioner Blumer with a proposed amendment suggested by myself. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so agenda is approved without change. And then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our August twelfth, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Blumer moves. Commissioner Steele seconds. And you have a comment, yes?
Yes, I do have a, a comment. Sorry for the paper shuffling for those at home.
Oh, yes.
I have a couple of comments. In our minutes, there was one at the end. I made a comment about thanking the public that noted for me and that was not listed in here.
So under number thirteen, Commissioner comments, you'd like that added?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that, would you, was that before, that was the very first thing you said?
That was the last thing I said.
That was the last, okay, after, after your discussion about the bylaws?
Yes, we almost, we almost adjourned and then I caught myself. The other thing is, I thought I had it marked here. There is a discussion here about Commissioner Ramback and myself asking about the downtown Oakmoss project.
Correct. Under project updates, number eleven.
And, and are you still of the position that you have not received any information such as what I was speaking about?
Are you making a correction to the minutes?
Pardon?
Are you making a correction to the minutes? Because that is what I stated.
Okay.
Yes.
But are you still of that position?
But that's not relevant to approving these minutes. So if you want to ask about that.
I can bring that up during project report if you want.
Project updates, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you.
I consider the suggestion about his missing comments to be a friendly amendment, so.
Thank you. And then I just had a quick correction. Under number two roll call, it should also say that Commissioner McConnell was not here. It's noted under absent, but not under roll call. And that is possibly my fault, but if you could make that correction, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, corrections? With both two friendly amendments, let's take a vote on the minutes of the August twelfth meeting. All in favor of approving with those changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and it's our pass as corrected, approved as corrected. Next on our agenda is communications. We have one from Director Schmidt regarding the schedule for the planning commission, which will take up in a few minutes. Anything else?
No.
So we are now on to number, item seven, public hearings. We have a special use permit, number two four zero two three for the Oakmoss Gateway. And we'll call the public hearing to order at six thirty-four.
Here we go. I'll zoom in a little bit for readability purpose and here we go. Special use permit, number two four zero two three, Oakmoss Gateway, to construct an adult-use marijuana retailer at one six one four West Grand River Avenue, Oakmoss, Michigan, four eight six four. The property is about two point four acres in size. It is Zone C two commercial. This does follow the, the SUP application before you tonight, follows the town board of trustees approval of the adult-use marijuana conditional license on July twenty-third, 2024. The property meets all the zoning requirements. It is shown as commercial in the future land use map. It is within adult-use marijuana overlay area three. And condition, as I said, conditional license has been approved. You have my report in front of you. The applicant is here. I can answer questions or so can the applicant, but we've seen these before and.
Does anybody have questions for staff?
I will note, this is the first, this is of the four that we've seen, this is the first one that is not going into an existing structure. So this would be followed by site plan approval. We require approvals from Michigan Department of Transportation, because Grand River Avenue. It'll also require approvals from the Indian County Drain Commission, as well as all the internal agencies and offices in the township.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? So the applicant you said is here?
Mm-hmm.
Would like to come and share any additional information? You're welcome to, you're not required to.
Appreciate it.
Come to the podium if you would.
It's your call.
Please give us your name and address.
Amar Algafaji. Twenty-nine five eighty Northwestern Highway, Southfield, Michigan. Here on behalf of Oakmoss Gateway LLC and appreciate your time today. Same application as it was for the medical at the time that was approved. We haven't changed anything in terms of design or plan. Recently approved for the recreational license. I'm looking forward to getting this developed and working together with the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We may call you back if there are questions, but we appreciate you being here today. Thank you. And if there are no additional questions, we will open it up to public comment if anybody here would like to provide public comment in this public hearing. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing at six thirty-seven. And I'll keep this up to any additional planning board discussion or comments if you'd like it, or if you are not wanting to comment and you want to, you're ready to take a straw poll to give direction to staff, we can do that.
Just a general question. I was reading through the staff announcement board, says there's five areas in the township where adult-use marijuana retailers are allowed. That is correct. In those areas, it's, this is, I'm gonna, I purpose, this isn't a fair question, but I'm gonna try to throw it out there in a fair way. Does that, having those only five areas that are approved development, put a natural cap on how many, how many dispensaries and the like could be approved?
No, that's a fair question. Yes, it does. Only one per district is allowed.
Okay, so it essentially means there will be, there's five?
There's possibly five, this is the last application.
This is the last application we have, okay. Because not that I want to deal, like, the law is the law, the ordinance has been passed, they're permitted, but, you know, from an almost economic, not necessarily even for this, I guess this committee, but like, at some point, how many is enough versus too many?
No, after much, much discussion, the, the board did adopt the policy and the, and the ordinance that created five districts. One is allowed in each district, but these, this is the last application. We have one district doesn't have an application.
Okay, so it's, it's almost a natural, okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Would entertain a straw poll. Those who would support directing staff to provide a, a resolution recommending approval of this special use permit, please say aye.
Aye.
Any who would not? Okay, so you have your direction, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
And then this is, this will come back to us probably at our next meeting.
Yes.
We just again recommend to the township board, so it'll go to the township board as the next step, so. What's next? And now we're on.
Closed here.
Oh, I closed it already, because we do that after we get our public comment.
Of course.
So that we can discuss. You're not gonna trick me on that one. Nice try, though. Next is update of the calendar. We have the, the email from, from Mr. Schmidt, who's interim township manager and the director of planning development, about a couple of our meeting dates. Looking at his email, he's suggesting that we move our October fourteenth meeting to October seventh, so that we don't have a conflict with Indigenous Persons Day. Our October twenty-eighth meeting, he is suggesting that we change location to the township fire station, community room. And then November eleventh, mentioned, but I think we had already addressed that when we set our original schedule, so we don't have a meeting on the eleventh, we have one on the eighteenth that month, and that's the only meeting we have in November. So unless people have thoughts or comments, I would suggest that we vote to update our calendar to move the fourteenth to the eighteenth, the location of the twenty-eighth, and we don't need to take action on the November meeting.
The fourteenth to the seventh?
Fourteenth, oh, thank you, fourteenth to the seventh. I'm jumping. Sorry, did not mean to panic people. Thank you.
It's only in my head because on the seventh, I'm highly likely to be out of town.
Okay.
But.
Okay. Anybody else have a conflict with the seventh that might put us in a problem for having quorum?
No, but I was gonna miss the fourteenth, so this works better.
Now, you're gonna say the seventh works better for me also. Yeah, I was, I was not like.
You're trying to be stupid, you want to lose.
You can say me.
So, all in favor of updating our calendar?
I'm sorry, could you give me the second one, the November one again, please?
The, the, moving October fourteenth, canceling that meeting, moving it to October seventh.
Right.
October twenty-eighth is not a date change, but it's a location change. And then November eleventh, we had already not had a meeting on the eleventh, we had anticipated that, being Veterans Day and moved our meeting to the eighteenth, so our schedule already reflects that one.
I will update my schedule accordingly.
Good. At least, that's how it's published in our calendar online, so maybe.
Yes, you, you could go through that.
Yeah, and we only have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. Because of holiday schedules. Everybody in favor of that change? I don't think we need to do a roll call, do we? Or would you like us to?
That's up to you, I can just say by consensus?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So you'll update it online and we'll.
Yeah, I got three days, so I'll take care of it.
Excellent, thank you. Everybody in favor, right? We set up, nobody votes? Excellent, thank you. Okay, moving. We're getting loose here, sorry. We are now on to item nine, other business, planning commission discussion. We have a discussion on a bylaw update and that seemed pretty simple. We talked about this briefly at our last meeting. So I think it's somebody making a motion to approve a change to our bylaw.
Well, it's not a motion.
Oh, we don't get to do that yet, right? We have to discuss it here?
This is a discussion item. If you want to move forward, I have to schedule a public hearing. That'll be now October seventh.
Okay.
And then the October twenty-eighth would be your decision.
So not our next meeting on the twenty-fourth? We couldn't do a public?
Well, I can't make the twenty-fourth. Because it's, it's public hearing notice, I have to get it fifteen days.
Got it, okay, thank you. All right, so let's discuss, yes, please.
Can we amend our own bylaws or does the board have to approve it?
You can amend your own bylaws through this process.
And as far as I understand, it's just, it's one word, right?
Well, there's, there's two.
A couple places.
Oh, okay.
One word twice.
Yeah.
Okay.
I.
Quorum, right?
Yes, okay.
I made the correction about the, the, Commissioner Scales recommended, and while I was doing that, I saw that two paragraphs ahead of that, the number of quorum should have changed from five to four as well. Simple.
While we're discussing that, we, so that we don't have to continue to do this anytime we make a change, instead of saying a specific number, why don't we go and say two-thirds? I'm sorry, a, a majority.
Yeah. Do you want to just strike the language then, or, I mean?
I would change the language to say that a quorum is a majority of those.
Okay.
Appointed. Yeah. Instead of saying a specific number.
So does that mean that we would only, if it's a majority of quorum, does that mean the number required is?
I see what you mean.
Very low?
The number doesn't change.
Look, there's only three people here.
Well.
Well, if that is not a quorum.
Quorum is, would be four. With seven members on the, on the board and the.
Right.
Commission, four would be a quorum. If it was ever, if we were ever to change, unless we didn't have that many people appointed and then it would be a majority. And if we had a vacancy.
This is self-explanatory, if you use the language I suggest.
Yeah, yeah, if you, if you, I agree, if you take the number out, because, you know, up until recently you had nine, so that number was five, rather than changing it each time, if you go back up to nine, we don't have to go through this again.
Just as a hypothetical, though, so if you have four as a quorum and something comes up for a vote and you have two-two.
Then the vote fails.
Vote fails?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But then, so does that mean we could pass something with only?
Three.
Three members present?
No, because with three members present.
No, 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 I mean, I mean, I mean, sorry, sorry, sorry. With three members voting for something, so then.
Yes, that is true.
If there was something substantial here and there were only four people here, then that means.
That means it could, it could pass with a three-one vote. Yes, that is, that is, that's the rules.
All right.
Same thing is true if there are five people.
Right.
Passive with three.
The, the only exception, obviously, if something needs a two-thirds vote, but very rarely does that happen.
And that would be the adoption of the master plan that would require that.
Yeah. I mean, quorum's quorum, so to fix that, we'd have to increase the size of the planning commission, so. Yeah. I would be fine with a simple majority as the language.
Plus, we have plenty of time to discuss this again.
In our public hearing and when we actually vote on it. I, I do think it's probably easier and, and as clear to just say a majority under five point four and then under five point seven A, raise that to say two-thirds.
Just say simply two-thirds majority?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
That does not give anyone concern or pause at this point.
Well, it needs to say two-thirds of the members.
Yes.
Serving.
It's not two-thirds of the members who are present, it's two-thirds of the members of the whole.
For, for five point seven A to adopt the master plan.
Okay.
And then I, I guess the only question I would have is if we go from four to a majority of, and let's say we run into an issue where we have like two vacancies because the township board steals two of our members at once instead of just one.
That doesn't change the body.
The body, okay.
We've run into this.
So this is not members appointed and serving, this is of the body itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So that puts us in a real bind then if we're.
We, we had that issue when you were still officially nine.
I remember that, yes.
Yeah.
We had a couple of meetings where that was potentially an issue. Okay, all right, that, that works for me.
Would you like me to bring this again with the fixed language and then you can schedule a public hearing, or do you want me to schedule a public hearing and then see this again trusting that? It, it's, it's your call, there are your bylaws.
Personally, I trust you to make those two changes and bring it back to us at a public hearing, but.
Okay.
You know, if you, I guess, wanted to just share it with the board.
I'll, I'll put it back on.
Let us look at it.
Sure. I'll put it back on as a discussion item, but.
What I wouldn't want to do, I guess what I wouldn't want to do is have a public hearing and not be able to use that as our public hearing because there was a typo in this, but.
Well, I'll catch, I'll catch it.
Okay.
I mean, you'll catch it. If I made it, you'll catch it, right? Either, I don't, I don't think it's a deal breaker.
Okay. All right. Okay. That sounds great, thank you. So we'll look forward to that ideally on the agenda for the October seventh meeting.
I have a question. So, so we're getting the draft version of this at the next meeting?
Correct.
And then the following meeting, we're gonna do the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
That work?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, so just, I've been working the math in my head, it just would seem very, I don't know what the word is, but you could have a situation where three people on a board of seven vote to move something along.
Yeah.
And I, I understand, I mean, it's math, right? I mean, the math doesn't change, but that's just, the design is weird. Just it, it leverages itself to odd outcomes.
I would, I would talk to Robert. Create the rules.
Yeah. Dig that guy up.
It happens all the time.
I mean, it, it kind of does.
So, if there's six people serving, you'll need four in order to pass a motion, which means a two-thirds vote. You now impose two-thirds rule.
Only for, the only things that require two-thirds.
What I'm saying is that three of six wouldn't pass a motion.
Right.
So you'd need four, which is effectively two-thirds.
No, that's not true, though. Because it's major, simple majority of those present and voting for most things. The only things that require two-thirds are the master plan or other things that, that, the exceptions are adoption of the master plan or any other action which by law township ordinance or parliamentary authority requires otherwise, so.
No, it wouldn't formally impose that, but I think there's situations where it effectively be that four of six is two-thirds, right?
But, I mean, well, yeah.
In effect.
Like if it were a three-three, you're right, it wouldn't pass. So, yes, so we hope to not have, not have an extended period of time where we have a vacancy or people not here and contentious issues.
Yes.
We'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, if, if we're worried about that scenario, wouldn't it? And we can hope, but is there a way for us to sort of design this so that?
No. No.
I mean, even if you have a.
You have a quorum. The quorum is four. That's the rule. Now, you did face this recently, remember? You knew you had a commissioner coming onboard, you had a major decision, you waited until he was on so that you knew you had an odd number of people. Like, you, you've seen this.
So majority, it's whether we have six or seven is gonna be.
As long as you have a quorum, you have a, you have a voting, yeah.
Right. Commissioner Scales?
The key to the whole thing is attend the meetings.
Show up, yeah. If it matters, show up. Any other comments, thoughts? Okay. So we are there and we are now on other business, A two, current, nine A two, current land use update.
So this is, I'm making a point of trying to bring something of interest at the, you know, during other business, just a little tidbit. I hope this doesn't blow up into huge conversation, because I don't have a lot of things specifically about this. This is a lot of data.
You gotta stop, bro.
You know, just jinx yourself and we're going to do it till ten o'clock at night.
I mean, I can't make huge map corrections unless you change, unless you're arguing with my interpretation of things. This is something that one or two commissioners has asked me for in the past. And I've been working on this a lot behind the scenes for a while and kind of looking for an opportunity to present this, but this is not zoning, not future land use, but an interpretation of what our current land uses are. Note that this might not correlate with what the property is zoned. Pretty basically, it's, it's been looking at the, our GIS extensively. We've had current land use maps in the past and, and have kind of used those designations. Maybe they could be a little finer in detail in some, in some points, but by and large, you can see forty-nine percent, almost half of our township is single-family residential. We have a lot of outdoor recreational, institutional, all the way down to twelve acres of mobile home park that was called out separately in past current land use maps, so I left it separate. There's one thousand five hundred and seventy-one acres of land that is classified transportation, commut, communications and utilities, six hundred and nineteen acres of water. Those aren't usable land. That's not usable land, so I took that out of that calculation, so that, that's why it says percentage of usable land. This is followed then, this is the map that I put together and you can see where the urban service boundary is in this heavy black line. That's the amended urban service boundary from the 2023 master plan update. That's as far as I can zoom in, I apologize. So. So, I should have put these, now I realize I should have put these on separate pages, I sincerely apologize, but what you're seeing here, this is a breakdown, this is the same data that I showed, or that I just talked about, um, total land, total land use category, number of acres, percentage, same data, this is how it breaks down in a bar graph, this is the property outside the urban, urban service boundary, so now you can see that outside of the urban service boundary, si, almost seventy percent of that property is single-family residential, those percentages change, right? Inside the urban service boundary, then, um, forty-four percent, you have a lot more acreage inside the urban service boundary, and then over here, um, percent of the, okay, this is, this is not the total acres, this is the percent of, so seventy-two point three percent of our single-family residents is inside the urban service boundary. I think the number that I was specifically getting asked for in the past, then, this developable open space, seventy-one point three percent of it is in the urban service boundary. Um, six point nine percent of the land out, inside the urban service boundary is developable open space, eleven point three percent of the land outside the urban service boundary is classified as developable open space, but it's much, it's only four hundred and four acres total. Now, I know that's a lot of data, I can answer questions, and happy to do so.
Commissioner Skiles?
Is there a reason or rationale why you combined outdoor recreation and cemetery?
It had been done in the past, I could separate them, we would have, the cemetery acreage would be small in comparison.
I just don't see where the two correlate.
Well, I kind of run and occasionally picnic in cemeteries, I, I see them as.
I don't see the resonance of the cemetery having any recreation.
I could talk about the historical Victorian use of cemeteries, but I don't think that's, that's actually usable to our conversation. I can separate them if you want to, but I don't, I don't think, I think that cemetery acreage, acreage would be negligible.
Okay.
How, sorry, how do you define institutional, does that include government buildings and?
Government buildings.
Nonprofit.
School buildings.
Hospital.
Hospital, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Wadak?
Cooperative arrangements, um, can you define what that means in this context?
Yes, I can, let me go up to this map.
Ah, that's probably good.
Um, this area here is a good example, that's College Fields, that is a cooperative arrangement with the city of.
Lansing.
Lansing. And as such, they've, it's, it's, they have zoning jurisdiction over that, same deal up here, uh, this is.
East Lansing.
Costco.
Yeah.
That's the East Lansing cooperative area.
Oh, it's a good thing I asked, because I, that is not the definition I had in my head.
Okay, these are not housing co-ops, if that's what you're thinking.
I actually was gambling more on it was like a farming type of agreement, or something like that, but, nope.
I think what it did, this, this was done years ago, and I'm blanking on the state statute that it allows it, but it, it gives the ability for the developers to capture the, the TIF um, that the city has, that the township didn't, and so they could develop and, and bring in some incentives that wouldn't have otherwise been available, because the.
Something like that, yeah.
National also has one of those, I, I think in, that might be Aurelius Township, but I think they have one of those with, um, um, City of Lansing also.
Yeah.
I worked for the City of Lansing when some of these were signed, and I have vague memories, but I, I, no, just enough to be dangerous and not.
Yeah, I get calls from people living in College Fields asking what they need to do to build, you know, build fences and stuff like that, and I say, you need to call the City of Lansing.
Yeah.
I would, I, I wish to go back a step too, I really think this is a wonderful presentation of the data overall, because it is, it is dense, um, and I will also say I shared Commissioner Skiles's questions on why outdoor recreation and cemetery were together, but I figured it was a, a GIS function, or maybe it's just indicating that neither one can really be readily used.
It, it is past practice, it is past practice.
Past practice, okay.
Commissioner McConnell, you have a question?
Yeah, I got one, a little tiny one, and two great big ones. The little tiny one is, uh, the township board on August twentieth approved a zoning change, twenty, twenty-four oh seven, uh, Mayberry Homes.
Yes.
Is that parcel on?
Yes, I have not changed that from developable open space, because we do not have a PUD in front of us proposing anything, I imagine that very soon I will change that to yellow.
Gotcha.
That will change numbers significantly.
Bigger picture, um, the, those big open space, uh, parcels, um, kind of draw the eye on the map, because they're big and open and relatively easy, the expectation is that somebody at some point will want to.
Right, right.
All the stuff that's in yellow is currently single-family, and in many cases, it's, um, built out, but in many cases, it's kind of much larger lot, sort of, there's a house on this large acreage.
That is correct. Good example, uh, Walnut Hills.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, but there's also, um, both within and without the, uh, urban service boundary, areas of low density, single-family, that could become higher density, depending on what sort of structure is there, and what somebody might want to do, so I just wanted to highlight that um, some of that land is subdividable, that's in yellow.
Oh, yeah, definitely, some of those lar, so if, if I look at a parcel, this is a little bit behind the curtain how this, I was doing this, if I look at a parcel and there's a house on it, and it's zone rural residential, and it's a five-acre parcel, then in theory, you know, as, you know, assuming lot widths and stuff like that, but in theory, that's five parcels, they just haven't subdivided it yet, but even if they do, it's still single-family residence. If they rezone it, like, for instance, um, zoomed in as much as I can, but that little itty-bitty corner there, Shaw Street, um, I think I might actually still show that developable, or yeah, I, I can't tell, I can't zoom in for close enough, and I apologize for that. It either went from office to multifamily.
All right, thanks, the last one, um, has to do with some of the totals, and when I look, for instance, at the outside the urban service boundary land use site, you've got something like, uh, developable open space of four hundred and four?
Outside of the urban service, yes.
And, um, it looks like most of that is in those big, large, um, lots that show up in the red hashing, and that owned by individuals who are in the business of developing.
That is a really good point, there are, there are outside, the, the parcels that are developable outside the urban service boundary, I think, well, I don't want to say that, because you got this big thing here, I will say this, though, um, what I don't show on this map are wetlands.
Right, and that.
And a lot of that developable, and this goes to something that we've said since I started here, we've done the easy stuff, we've developed the easy parts of the township.
I guess, um, the point I'm trying to make is that when I glance through it, it looks to me like, um, around half or maybe a little less than half of the sort of developable open space that we're looking at inside and outside the urban service boundaries, really owned by a relatively small number of individuals.
That would be an interest, yeah, I could, I could pull that, and s, I don't want to be public with who owns what, but, you know, put that in a memo form, but I think that might be a valid point, you've got certainly, um, that piece right there is a really good example, that's one big ownership. Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions, thoughts, observations?
I have a question for clarification on the tables, the, um, the two to the far right inside the U S B land use category.
Yeah.
Could you help me understand the percentages again, just, I don't.
Okay. The land inside the urban service boundary is fourteen thousand five hundred and ninety-two, the usable, usable land, okay? Of that, forty-four point one percent is single-family residential.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but then the next table looks like the same, I'm just confused by the language, because the headings are the same, I don't.
Okay.
That table different than the previous one.
That final table shows of all the single-family residents, how much is inside the urban service boundary?
So.
And what that shows is that seventy-two point three percent of our single-family residential properties in the township are inside the urban service boundary.
The, because the far left of the.
I understand that one.
Eight thousand nine hundred and three acres of single-family residential.
Yeah.
Um, seventy-two percent of it is inside the urban service boundary.
And, oops, I'm sorry.
And then this is of this total, of the total acres inside the urban service boundary, forty-four percent of it is single-family residential, so.
And all of the industrial.
Yep, six thousand four hundred and thirty-four acres of the fourteen thousand five hundred and ninety-two acres inside of, of the, inside the urban service boundary are single-family residential, that's forty-four percent, forty-four point one percent.
I don't know why I'm still struggling with what this percentage then means for here.
Order, so if, if you look at the total, which is the, if you want to scroll.
Oh, sure, sorry.
People who are watching.
Here you go.
Um, so the table on the left is all of the land in the township, eighteen thousand one hundred and sixty-one acres. Of that, fourteen thousand five ninety-two is inside the urban service boundary.
Got it.
And three thousand five hundred and sixty-nine is outside of it.
Yeah.
So then, this is basically, just to break down, the second and the third tables are, in total, add up to the table on the left. The table on the right is just a different way of looking at it, it's taking the table, the third one, and saying, in comparison to the far-left table, the third cate, the third column is seventy-two percent, so.
Okay.
You know, you know what I.
Two percent of the total.
You know.
Two percent of the total, this is the total.
Got it, okay.
This is seventy-two percent.
Okay.
Of that total, and that's what this is showing you, it's basically doing the math from cut.
From the first one to the fourth.
Yeah, and then, and then box two and three add up to the left side.
Yeah, I think I got that, thank you.
It is, it took me a sec, but.
Yeah, and this is just, this is just totaling what is, is there, there's no way. I'm, I'm trying to make sure that I'm not about to ask a really dumb question. There are no dumb questions. It's just, this is just like the zoning, and then the, the map itself provides the visual of what has, has not been developed, right?
The map itself shows all of everything.
Well, yes, I'm sorry, but the map is the only place where the not-developed stuff is accounted for.
No.
Because that's what I'm trying to understand about the percentages, I'm just seeing.
There's a land use cat.
Like zoned, how everything is zoned.
There's a land use, okay, these aren't zonings.
Or land use.
Okay. There's a land use category called developable open space. That is, that's the, oh, that's the available land that's shown in these hatch patterns on the map.
The candy canes.
So basically, you'd have to look at, and I think Commissioner McConnell was kind of touching on this point too, you'd have to see an overlay to understand for sure how the, the candy cane sections, um, what land use category they are in, I mean, generally, they're probably going to be whatever they're bordered by, but to know for sure.
Yeah.
You'd have to be able to compare.
For readability of this map, I shut off the parcel lines.
I get it, okay.
Okay, um, but with the map, I could show anything, like, like I just alluded to a few minutes ago, I could put wetlands over the top of this, and suddenly you'd see, oh, maybe that's why that's.
Right.
Developable, now we can, then, okay, so that raises a question, should we make a distinction?
Yeah.
But then that, you know, that's a, if you got a ten-acre site and it's got five acres of wetland, and you still got five acres of developable land, it's a ten-acre parcel that gets shown all unhatched, I'm not dividing stuff, I'm not dividing parcels in half by this category.
Yeah, well, thank you to everybody who contributed to helping me process that, and, um, just something else that I noticed too, was the, um, the multifamily, um, you know, the orange, there's just not a lot, and then there's certainly not much, you know, adjacent to it that appears to be developable, which was really kind of what I've been wondering for a long time, so I really appreciate.
Sure.
The time you put into making this clearer.
If I, if I understand part of what Commissioner McConnell was, was getting at, even some of the areas in the yellow, single-family areas, the parcel itself may be so large that it could be considered what, what you might want to phrase redevelopable.
Oh, yeah.
In, in the future, if you, you know, if you, if you're living on a five-acre parcel of land with one house on it, uh, that's a potentially redevelopable parcel, it would take a rezone, uh, but it's at least possible.
Well, it might not take a rezoning, it could just be a land split if it's.
Well, sure, if it's still a single-family.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm gonna make this a meta-question, is, and you have experience outside of Meridian Township, correct?
Correct.
Um, I don't want to say how would we compare to compete, because essentially, you know, if you're running, bringing housing, you're competing with other areas, right, for those resources, like, and you said we've done the easy stuff. I think I'm trying to lead to the question of like, do you see a problem here, are we under, I'm gonna say underdeveloped, it's almost not the right term, because the, the land exists, but it's about categorization. Well, I'm, how about this, so we have, we're looking for prime parks, prime businesses, and prime schools, do we have prime land to make all that happen?
Like in, I'm, forgive me, like, in what regard, like, what do you mean, like?
So I guess, is the land that is available in developable state, is it appealing to housing development zone I want to bring in? Or, like, do we have enough to appear appealing to those types?
Okay, depends on what it is, like, obviously, this was appealing, because this is being, this has been rezoned, and I'm waiting, eventually, they're going to come in with a plan unit development, and show us how they're going to build all the houses and preserve all the wetlands, and et cetera. Um, some of these are. I, let's see, I think, I think, okay, so.
Maybe, maybe, I mean, you're, maybe the reality is you're the prof, no, the reality, it's not maybe, you are the professional, like, what were the three things that you took away when you completed this up for all the hours it took? Like, what, what stood out to you?
You're asking my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay, when I look at a map of Meridian Township in general, um, I'm always struck at the giant neighborhoods that historically have been built here. That's not a good or a bad thing, I'm just, you're asking, you know, what, what do I see?
Yeah.
Um, it's very clear that we have a commercial core, uh, that doesn't mean we don't have other commercial around the township, we have pika areas to get that commercial to go. Uh, one thing that shows up very small on this map, I do call the Haslip, or this, no, the Haslip Ridge site is developable, it hasn't, we don't have an approved site plan on that site. Um, when I do, I might change that, but I, we're not there. Um, similar with other things. It doesn't show, well, how do I say this? Um, if you take this and you put the wetlands and, and the trails, and, and you start putting all the, all the amenity stuff together, it goes above this map, so maybe above your question, I've, I've never worked in a community with so much recreational potential. Um, and, and as an aside, although it's not something you'll take from this map, I've also never worked in a community with such forward stringent wetland regulations.
Yeah, because it, because the other part they're gonna, is you, this, I can't imagine the hours that it took into this, and to some extent, we have a duty to sort of figure out, like, what you saw and make related decisions from it, right? And that's what helps drive our decision-making, like, I don't want this to just be in a pack at once and never come back.
No.
I think it's important.
So I think future, future analysis, um, when we start talking in a few years about master plan updates, because that is a every-five-year conversation, maybe this is good to take, and, you know, I'll keep this updated, and I'll bring this back out, and compare this to our future land use map, maybe, and maybe that might. this to our future land use map maybe. And maybe that might drive some changes. Uh, also, we can compare this to zoning. Now, some of that would be, I wouldn't show this map. I might show small inset maps because that gets into a little bit of a fine detail, you know, on a half acre parcel, you don't see that so much on this. But that's where I think this map is useful. Where, where do we have the discrepancies between what we say you can do, what are you actually doing, and what do we want you to do in the future?
Mr. Skills?
I think what you've done here is a great start. And you responded appropriately to the questions that several of us have asked.
Oh, thank you.
I, I looked at this and I could see that it, it actually validates what I've offered on, and that is that Saginaw is where our buildable area is.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Oh, yeah.
I looked to the east and that's a goal oriented picture. I mean, our goal is not to develop, but the rural eastern part, part of this township. So this is an accurate picture of where we are, where we've been and where we want to go.
And what might be helpful as a future conversation, and I'm not sure now, or it may take some time to do it, is maybe having someone from the develop, like, the Economic Development Office come and talk about thing, you know, like the places that are potentially developable or comparing those to like how they're zoned. Are they developable as a neighborhood? Are they developable as multi-use, multi-family housing? Are they developable as commercial? And, and kind of look at some of those areas and that might, I know we already have our overlays and we've already targeted certain areas. And I certainly don't want to take attention away from those areas that have already been flagged for development. But for kind of understanding, sort of to get a little deeper in this, maybe some of the potential for the areas that are noted as developable. And are they really, you know, do they, do they match what our master plan says we want in terms of our values for the township?
Sure.
That might be helpful.
Thank you so much for this.
Yeah, that's really interesting.
Can I give one more tidbit?
Yes.
Sure.
I look at the single family residential, I see, uh, and the multifamily residential, it looks, they total to about ten thousand acres. And, um, of that, almost nine thousand is in single family and about one thousand in multifamily. So, uh, about half of us are, uh, living on about nine tenths of the residential land in the township. And that always strikes me personally.
I will make a note about that. If, if I see an individual parcel with a duplex, I do cla, I do classify duplexes as a single family residences. Back channel, I can explain that rationale, but I will die on that hill. Well, that's a strong statement, but, but.
Yeah, I would, I would also echo everyone's appreciation. This is really cool. I like, I like the work. Um, one tidbit that I would offer that's interesting related to our village of Namoka conversation is the, the small little spots of different colors in that space.
Mm-hmm.
And in relation to the rest of the township. Not that I'm saying we have to have big blocks of color. Uh, it's just interesting to see the diversity in that space.
There's not a lot of places in the township where the single zoning district allows single family duplex and multifamily in the same, without a rezoning.
Right.
Right? Um, it's, it's part of the characterization of that area.
Yeah. It's interesting. Um, that.
And, and there's some cool institutional uses in that area too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. No, I don't mean to, I'm not disparaging it in any way.
Okay.
Saying it's just interesting to see that against the rest of the, the development. Like, I think the, we generally develop in big swaths, it seems like. Um, and, but when some, when a group of people and over a long period of time have an opportunity to develop in small pockets, then this is sort of what it turns into. Um, and you get that variety in that space.
Mm-hmm.
Then the other, so I have one more tidbit and then a request. Uh, the tidbit, the other tidbit is, the mall is a giant.
It is.
Red pocket in that space.
Right in the middle.
Yes. In which I look forward to what can come from that space, uh, from many different developmental perspectives. Um, and then the request I have is, this sort of piggybacks a little bit on, um, what Commissioner McConnell was saying, um, about the, the nine tenths rule, not the rule, but what we're seeing here.
Yeah.
Nine tenths of the land is owned by the, a smaller population. Um, it would be interesting to see, how the density of our single family residential properties are broken down on this map. So, and the reason I'm asking is because, so as an example, I live in Ottawa Hills and we all have half acre plots.
Right.
We are like, I mean, I can get anywhere in five minutes.
Right.
I can get to thirteen grocery stores or whatever it is in five minutes.
Right.
Um, I'm right on the new bike path. Like, it's a prime place to live and, and we really like it. But we also own a half acre and we're only four people. Um, and so it's, it's almost like, are there, are there areas like that that we may want to think about as strategically viable places for increasing density in the future? I don't know. Like, I don't want to sell my house, but it's something to think about as we continually move forward. Um, and that's what this map is making me think about.
Would you like to see a, like, I could show just the single family residence stuff and then I could differentiate different densities if you'd like. You want to see that kind of a density?
Yeah. I think that would be really helpful. Um.
Is there a, a line? I mean, where, where do you want me to break that out? Because that's a very subjective, one man's half acre is.
It's another man's.
Yeah. I mean, you see it as a lot of land for your, for your people, but there are people in this township that if I told them they had to move a half acre, they'd scream.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't know. Does anybody, I have no idea. Does anyone else have a thought about that?
You said, uh, earlier, a five acre lot could be subdivided five times without a rezoning. Did I hear you right?
Generally, I mean, yeah, yeah, just on broad, just gross number without looking.
See, that, that's one threshold I think you might want to put on is, is it, is it.
Five acre?
The. Could be subdivided just through a land split without requiring a rezoning.
You'll get your map in about three years. Parcel basis.
Yeah. Yeah, I also don't, I wouldn't want this to, to take you forever, uh, Brian. So like, it's like, I'd also say you're the, you're an expert who's working on all this data. And so it's like, what do you think makes sense?
What if I show, what if I did this?
Read down.
Half acre? Half acre and under. Ha, I don't think, I think half acre to one acre would be a little too fine of a distinction. But what about?
Well, I think it also depends on how many houses there are in that area.
Well, right.
So like, so I'm thinking about my, my in-laws live in Grand Rapids and they have like a, I don't know, a third of an acre maybe approximately. Um, and they're fairly, that, that feels dense to me coming from Meridian Township.
Yeah.
Um, but they still have a nice.
Okay.
Chunk of property. Um.
Well, let's, let's do this then. This might get to what you're, what you're saying. Um, I, I can, why don't I do five categories, up to half an acre, half acre to two acres? And then you get, at that, at that, you're above our density of all our zoning districts. As we go up to forty thousand acre, forty thousand square foot lots in our, our district. And then go up to five acres, ten acres, and then anything above ten acres in size.
It's a good start.
All right.
Okay, okay. Um, give me a meeting or two. That is a, that's a, that's a relatively straightforward calculation.
Yeah, I think I have a friend in Nashville, Tennessee, and they're not allowed to, if their lot is of certain size, they can actually basically build a second house on there and sublet it.
Yeah.
And it's like, that is just how booming Nashville is because that's how many people want to work there, live there.
Like accessory dwelling.
Or rent an Airbnb there.
Yeah.
I rented one there a couple of years ago and the house next door was for sale. I'm like, oh, like, let me just sheer, morbid curiosity, look at this. One point four million. It's like, you know, fifteen hundred square foot.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I love all the green space that I can see visually.
Right.
The recreation, yeah, I love that. I don't care if it includes cemeteries.
Cemetery is developable or undeveloped?
Well, thank you very much for that.
Absolutely.
So now we're at item ten, reports and announcements, township board update. So you're back on again. It's been a while since we've had a meeting, so.
Let's do this. Give me a moment. Yes, this is cheating. Did it say?
While he's going, I can just give a brief update on the environmental commission.
Sure.
Uh, at our last meeting, uh, we created a, a study group of three of our members to begin the process of examining our two thousand and four green space plan as we have in the master plan as an objective. So, um, there, uh, got together for the first time yesterday and, uh, Director of Public Works, Opsimer, has offered, um, to coalesce the right staff from his office and hopefully from planning and parks as well to look back at what we did in two thousand and four and see how far we've come and see if there's something else that we should be thinking about.
I would welcome that conversation with Director Ops.
There's, uh, was discussion at the end of our meeting about, um, a proposed, uh, budget discussion, which I guess will be in those township board minutes, and a proposal to, uh, hire a new engineer within public works, um, an environmental engineer who would provide, um, staff to the environmental commission, but from an engineering perspective. So we're very much hoping that, um, if that happens, that we'll have, uh, quite a bit of firepower in the township in terms of these GIS capabilities and sort of data that we just didn't have in two thousand and four. Things that we know about, things that we've done, things that we've accomplished. So.
Interesting.
Stay tuned.
So board update, I got it in front of you. There was a hearing, last board meeting on September third, there was a hearing on the twenty twenty-five township budget. Uh, actually, um, especially as permanent, uh, the board numbering system is different than ours. So it's two four dash one seven, Haslett Gallery. Um, and then board discussion items, ordinance two, two, twenty twenty-four dash oh six to, uh, the, the Doby Road rezoning. Um, the applicant was not at that meeting and, um, not, there was, that was all it was. It was a discussion.
I'll let you watch the video if you're curious about how that went. I don't want to speak publicly.
Do, um, a question, they've had this recurring issue of the repairs on, uh, the fire equipment. Has that been resolved or?
I saw that, didn't I?
I saw there was an issue about the fire truck, but.
I don't know that answer. I can get that for you if you're curious.
I was just curious.
Okay.
So I have another curiosity on this. If you're paying attention to the IT budget for them at all, because I don't know if you've read the news recently, the city of Traverse City, city of Grand Bling, I think the city of Flint have all been hacked. And their data's being held. So I'm just.
Really?
Yes. So.
Don't know why I haven't heard that coming from Flint myself.
Yeah, I, 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 through my regular job, I've been in the midst of this sort of stuff. But yeah, and it's almost like you start to realize if you're a cyber criminal and of places you want to hit data, right? I mean, I'm going to gamble, a lot of townships have probably not put the force behind their IT that they have, that some other places have. So I was just morbid curiosity. I said, I, I know those have been hit recently.
Okay.
Thank you for that update. Are there any other liaison reports, Mr. Skills?
I have one from the EDC. And, uh, you know, ever since our July eighth meeting, when I noticed that the village of Oaklimus was not on our project update list, I've been asking about it. And, uh, I've been very disappointed that, uh, Mr. Shortkey has not been kept in the loop. I, I don't know how this works anymore. But there was an update on the village of Oaklimus, at our meeting on August, uh, eighth. And they confirmed everything I've been telling you in a memo dating back to May twenty twenty-four. Uh, it says that the, uh, the cost of all of the updates exceeds ten million dollars on a portion of the construction the developer cannot finance. The township currently does not have the funding available to take on that portion of work. For the foreseeable future, the project is indefinitely delayed. And that goes back to May, May of twenty twenty-four. Uh, now, and I brought you a copy so that you can follow up on that. There is a written memo, memorandum dated August twenty, on August fifth of twenty twenty-four from, uh, the economic development director. Pass that down to him.
The, the only thing I will say is that if, if that memo exists and that's been a public memo, then I feel more comfortable saying a lot of things that I've been keeping inside. What I say publicly and what I have in my head aren't always the same thing. Um, that property is for sale. I think that's public knowledge. I mean, you can go look, Google, Google it and you'll find it for sale. Um, also, I had a meeting last week. It was with a, but just with, with a fishing expedition, if you will. Just, I mean that nicely, but, um, and in the course of that conversation, I heard some more of this stuff. So some, sometimes I'm, I'm just, I, I don't know if you're, what, what more you want from me, if anything, but I'm, I, but, but I appreciate this information. Thank you.
Okay. My concern was just, I felt like you weren't informed, which meant that we weren't informed as a board. And I knew other things were going on around us and we had no information.
I, I have been.
Appreciate your response.
I have been publicly fore, fore, forecoming with what I have felt, that I am comfortable in the position of principal planner, not a director or something like that, saying publicly. Um, I feel like I recently, since our last meeting, because remember, we've missed a meeting, recently I feel unable to say more things, such as, yeah, that property's for sale, they've pulled out. That's, that's a legitimate statement now.
Okay. Thank you.
What do they ask them?
Do we have any other liaison reports? I'm sorry.
We're gonna be too old to care by the time.
Okay, um, project updates. You've given us a sheet. Any changes to that or any questions on the project update list that was in our packet?
I hear a lot of rumors on some stuff that's coming, but no one's pulled the trigger yet. So I'll let you know.
Good to know. This time next meeting, we may know more, right? Um, we are down to item twelve, public remarks. Anybody would like to speak during public remarks? Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner comments? Anybody else have any comments to share? Okay, I.
Oh, I do have one.
Oh, please, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, uh, Mr. Shortkey, I think you're doing a great job in light of everything that's happened over the past, is it four months now since the changes?
Time blocks we're having.
Yeah, so just want you to know that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Appreciate your work, and I think you're doing a good job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, there, we appreciate you.
Absolutely, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Set, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? We are adjourned at seven thirty-six.